This special meeting of the city of Crescent City this Friday, July 7th, 2017. Would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Follman?
Here.
Councilmember Greenow?
Here.
Pro temp short?
Here.
Mayor Enscore?
Here.
Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and... Councilmember Follman, would you please lead us?
Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into our agenda, I do have one item that I would like the council to consider for addition. It is a response letter to Megan Hunt from the Construction Industry Force Account Council. I believe everyone received an email from her regarding the Harding project. And since we will be continuing our discussion about that, I would like to add a draft letter that I have provided to you as a potential response to her email.
Her email since the last meeting, so will I move... We move that into the agenda.
Can I have a motion to add? Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Pro temp short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. We'll add that item. We'll move on into our consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar. The regular council meeting minutes from June 19th, warrant claims list for June 10th through June 23rd, and the bi-week payroll report for ending in June 24th and paid June 30th. Do I have any public comment regarding our consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve consent.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim? Pro temp short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. We will now adjourn our special meeting to the special meeting of the successor agency of the former redevelopment agency, and we will call to order the successor agency. And we have one item. It is an update on the 2017, 18, and future loan payments. Who's going to bring this to us?
Chair, that's a consent item.
Oh, it's just a consent item.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I'm used to this. I thought we didn't have any consent because of the way it was situated on there. Okay. So that's the one item on the consent. Any questions about that? Not then... We have any public comment on this consent item? None, bring it back to the council then for approval on the consent.
Moved to approve.
Do I have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Board member Greenow?
Yes.
Board member Follman?
Yes.
Vice board member Keim? Vice chair short?
Yes.
Chair Enscore?
Yes, all right. We do have one item in new business, and that is regarding the disposition of real property owned by the former RDA. All right, sorry about that. Thank you, Ms. Lever. If you want to come in and address this, please.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. What you have before you today is an update on kind of an old item for the successor agency. With the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, there are two vacant properties that are owned by the successor agency. And per our approval from the state, the successor agency is supposed to sell those properties. They've actually been listed for sale by owner for about two years now, and there's been really no progress on that. So we're bringing this back to the board today to ask for some direction on maybe renewing efforts to get determination on whether you would like us to get a new letter of opinion on the value, because the one we have is from 2014. And then whether you want us to renew efforts to sell by owner or to maybe contact a broker to see if... About getting these two properties sold.
All right. The one question I have is because we are responsible for these properties and we're responsible for incurring any costs in the process of listing or the sale of these properties, but we only get 11% back from the sale of these. The taxing entities is divided up. If we keep track of any money that we spend, can we be recouped for those costs?
I don't know of anything that would allow us to do that. I did ask our consultant for the successor agency business, and his opinion was that any sort of administrative costs just have to be borne by the city's general fund. So like getting a letter of opinion, which last time cost about $300, the city would pay for that. If it was a selling cost that could be structured into the escrow of the deal, that would just come out of the proportionate share.
The questions?
So any costs incurred would not be factored into the net of the sale and then divided among the entities?
That's my understanding. I mean, we could go back and try to fight that, but we're talking about $300. I'm not sure if it's...
And then the percentage that a potential realtor would get for the sale?
That would be the escrow.
Right, but that would be through the escrow process.
So that has nothing to do with our 11% that we would receive?
The 300 or so dollars for getting the letter of opinion or...
The percentage that the realtors receive?
The brokerage fee. So my understanding would be that if we were successful in selling these two properties, it would be the sales price minus the broker's fees and whatever other costs are involved. That net amount would be turned over to the county and then divided among the taxing entities, and we get approximately 11% of that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a suggestion. We might do is have staff approach some of the realtors in town and ask that they prepare not only some sort of proposed marketing plan, how they would market it, what their fee would be, and as a part of that, that they would provide their opinion of value, which would be probably then the listing price, and shift that entire thing to them. And some broker would then be successful and hopefully sell the property and collect the fee. Because they would... If I'm selling a piece of property and I choose to list it, that's one of the things that they would do for me, would be to give me a value, an opinion of value as to what the listing price should be.
Right, but if a realtor is going to be taking the property as a listing, aren't then they responsible for maintaining, mowing it and...
No, generally not, no. The property owner is still responsible for the property maintenance. But my point is, is to rather than spending the money to have another opinion of value paid for, solicit proposals from brokers. I think they'll all probably come in with the same fee for selling the property. Pretty normally, 10% for vacant land, but a part of their service would be in listing, it would be to give you a market analysis of what they believe the property is worth and what would be a fair listing price. Rather than selecting any particular one, put out some general solicitation, ask brokers to see who would be interested in doing it. Anyway, that would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I think whether it is some kind of formal RFP or informally, I think that that's exactly what we need to do. If we were going to get... If we were going to be able to move these properties just by putting a sign up in them, we would have had a lot more interest by now. I think we need to solicit those proposals from local realtors and let them bring it back to us. And I think these things need to go on the market aggressively, be marketed and hopefully disposed of in a timely manner. So I think that that's a good approach to doing that, is allowing... And I don't know how formal the state's going to require us to be in doing anything like that as far as the value. I mean, before, we just simply got Stremberg to give us a basic appraisal. So I would think that any realtor that was putting together some kind of proposal, if they included as their proposal that they would define the market value, then I think that that's something we need to make sure that we tell them that we expect to be part of their proposal, that you will define and give a letter of market value to be considered as the listing agent.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Young's suggestion. We should query our local realtors.
Okay.
Like the cheapest way to go about it, one that's fair to all the realtors that submit for it.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Graham?
Do we need a motion for some of this stuff, or can we just offer by consensus for the council to allow staff to begin pursuing this stuff?
I think if you want to direct a specific method for us to use, whether, you know, for sale by owner versus going, you know, issuing an RFP for realtor, I think a motion might be helpful for that.
Okay.
The for sale by owner sign was up for approximately five minutes and then gone. So nobody was maintaining that... Nobody at the city, anyway, was maintaining that there was a for sale sign by owner on the property.
I don't know about that, but that could be the case.
Well, I own a property right next to one of those properties.
Sure.
And I remember seeing Mr. Palazzo putting the sign in the grass, and it was there for a few days, and then it was gone.
Okay.
So you're believing that we should try again and maintain the sign?
Well, if we're going to put a sign up, we need to be maintaining that the sign stays up, is what I'm... The point I'm trying to make. Or if a realtor is going to do it, they will definitely be making sure that their sign is maintained.
Well, I personally don't think that we... And I didn't when we first talked about this. I think that we're better off being served by a real estate professional to actually market the property. I don't think that we don't have... That's not something that our staff specializes in, nor do I think our staff has the time to be actively working on that if we really want to dispose of these properties. I think we need a real estate professional to take on that responsibility, and that would be my recommendation, as with Mr. Young, that we put out for RFP, including the requirement that they include a market value as part of their proposals, because then we're not having to be out that money upfront.
Okay.
I agree with you, and I guess so moved.
Okay. Any public comment? Yes.
Can I chime in real quick? Just for your information, whichever direction you give staff tonight does have to be approved by the oversight board meeting next Wednesday.
Okay. All right.
I'll second the motion.
Did you... Do you have sufficient to get that motion stopped? Okay. All right, do we have any public comment regarding these two parcels and their disposition? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the board. We a board? We're a board.
We're a board.
Or are we just bored? Would you please pull the vote?
Board member Keim?
Yes.
Board member Greenow?
Yes.
Board member Follman?
Yes.
Vice chair short?
Yes.
Chair Enscore?
Yes, very good. Thank you. Look forward to moving forward on this entire process. Okay, back to our... We have another item for the successor agency, and that is the appointment to the oversight board of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the city of Crescent City, and that is a public member. And you have an attached resolution that would appoint Mike Young as a representative of the employees of the former redevelopment agency to the oversight board, replacing our former city manager, David Vandemarke. We have any question about this? Comments?
Yes, sir.
Pretty straightforward. Any public comment about the oversight board appointment? All right, we'll bring it back. Then we have an attached resolution. Would somebody be willing to make a motion to approve the resolution SA 2017-01?
I move we approve resolution number SA 2017-01, appointing Mike Young as the representative of the employees of the former redevelopment agency to the oversight board.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, very good. Would you please pull the vote?
Board member Greenow?
Yes.
Board member Follman?
Yes.
Board member Keim?
Yes.
Vice chair short?
Yes.
Chair Enscore?
Yes, very good. All right, we will adjourn as the successor agency, and we will reconvene as the city council. And continuing business, we have the declaration of emergency for Harding Avenue, our status update.
All right, thank you, Mayor Enscore, members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for the mouse. So Harding Street. Last time this came before the council, it was day number one for the Harding Street project. We're now approximately two and a half, three weeks into the project, and the project has gone just about as good as we could have imagined at this point. It's not an easy project. Very challenging in regard to the sewer line especially, and the bypassing of that sewer line, installing that, shutting down that lift station that conveys pretty much all of the sewage north of, you know, everything north of Washington, including the hospital, including all of the Washington Park area. And so basically, we had to shut that down for a number of hours in order to get that bypass line installed. That was completed successfully, and then we're able to get down to the sewer line. I've prepared a quick PowerPoint, just showing some of the pictures to kind of walk you through what's been accomplished, and then we'll talk about the upcoming schedule briefly. All right, now, so day number one. It was always important, every morning, we had a safety meeting, we had to get on the same page. This wasn't just a city-only project, wasn't just a county-only project, it was in an area that we had to be concerned about the environment as well. So every day, we met, went over safety, went over environmental concerns that we might have, and then commenced with the project. First order of business was replacing the sewer line. Sewer line was a 10-inch AC main. It was approximately about seven feet deep at that point, so even just getting down to that was a challenge. And then actually installing the bypass in and around the area that we had to replace the culvert was even more of a challenge, not to mention the fact we had to bypass that lift station that was conveying close to half a million gallons of sewage every day. Not to make matters worse, but the line was an AC line. So AC stands for asbestos concrete. So when we actually cut into it, you couldn't just cut into it like a normal line. This was infinity abatement. They were a contracting crew that we dealt with, so they helped us actually make the cut so we could then remove the asbestos material. AC also plays a big role in the emergency component of this project, as this line, made out of asbestos cement pipe, is very brittle. It can't withstand the sheer forces, especially if it's being undermined or in sub-suitable soil conditions, which is exactly what we found. So you see, this is a good shot of the utility, so we're not only dealing with the AC sewer line and that replacement, but also a 10-inch PVC water line running across the project. Here's another shot. That's going into the sewer manhole. What this doesn't show is that the sewer manhole had actually settled three or four inches to... It was my estimate on it, actually putting a kink in the AC pipe. We're just fortunate that it had joints right around the manhole. It was able to flex for at least this limited time, so it was very important that we got to it when we did, so that the sewer line did not rupture. This is a good shot of the storm drain manhole that was causing a lot of the failure. You can see it was faulted construction when they put it in. Here's a close-up shot where that pipe comes in. You can see it was falling apart. It was very brittle, had open gaps. This was mining the street from underneath the street surface as well as the sewer line. And just a shot of us taking the water main out as well. Here's a good shot of the county excavator. It actually, we were digging down, and then all of a sudden, we ran into unsuitable soils. Actually, the excavator itself buried itself to the counterweight and had to be pulled out by another excavator. There's the replacement of the sewer culvert. Here is the, again, replacing the culvert. You can see, though, that the project logistics just allowed very little room to actually stage any materials, so you're dealing with about a 40-foot wide street in which we had to then create access roads down in to get 20 feet deep to replace the storm drain itself. So getting materials in and out, project logistics was very complicated, not to mention that we had our bypass sewer line on the north half of the street, so we couldn't really even utilize that component. More shots. Here's where we're starting to get some of the pipe in the ground and starting to come back out. See, we have the new pipe in. We had to bring in some three-to-eight-inch stabilization rock due to the fact the soils were not suitable, so we were able to put that down, get good compaction. I'd like to personally thank Galia Wildlife Consulting. This is a shot of Robin Galia. They were there day in, day out, making sure that we had all of our BMPs in place. BMPs stand for best management practices, and they were always there to monitor the construction activities and make sure there were no impacts to the environment. So here's a good shot of the new culvert in, as that's to the right of that screen. The old culvert's still there. Once the new culvert was in, then it was time to remove the old culvert. There's pieces of the old culvert as we removed it. It's a good shot of the sewer line going back in right before we made that reconnection. Again, logistically, just an absolute nightmare to try to reconnect the sewer line now, because again, you have 13,000 gallons of sewers that's strapped in that line that you now have to get out, not to mention bypassing the lift station. So it took four Vector trucks continually running at all times until we made that connection. You can see another shot there. And then this is some recent shots. We're coming up out of the street now. We're to a street subgrade at this point. Here's a shot of the new culvert as it comes in and the creek flowing into it. That's pretty much the update at this point. So things have progressed extremely well, given that we've only had two and a half weeks and a Fourth of July falling right in the middle of it. So county crews, hats off to them. They've been great to work with. Galia Wildlife's been great to work with, and our crews have done an outstanding job. Anticipated future work, so basically next week, we're going to be putting in the pedestrian concrete facilities. We'll let that occur for a few days, and then we'll repave and restripe the road, and this project will be done. So at this point, though, we'd like the council to continue the project so we can exponentially complete it and finalize the project.
So are you ahead of schedule?
We are slightly ahead of schedule, yes, which is right where we want to be. Yes.
Yeah, that's great.
Yes, and again, this project, depending on the day, you know, came to standstill at various points in times, and it's just overcoming those obstacles. And the county has done a great job, as well as city crews, to do that and get us where we are. So things have worked out.
How are we doing as far as our funding?
Funding, we're right about on track, you know? I mean, it's... Costs are still coming in, so I don't have an exact figure, but I do think we'll come very close to our budget of $120,000.
Under or...
I think we're going to be pretty close to that number.
Okay, pretty close.
Well, it looks like you had to buy some rock.
We had to buy some rock, and that was not anticipated. Yeah, there were some unanticipated costs. The concrete portion is coming a little higher than what I was hoping, so that's where some of those numbers are still a little bit... They're still a little bit fuzzy, because we don't have it exactly in yet, but I do think we're going to be right about where we said we're going to be, about $120,000.
Okay, thank you.
You said that the concrete work... Are you talking about the sidewalk work?
Yes.
I thought we were going to be putting that out for bids.
We did. We received the bids yesterday.
They came in yesterday?
They came in yesterday. So we put that out, and it was under $45,000, so we put it out just to local bids, listed five bids from our local contractors. Most of them are busy, you know? They couldn't just... They couldn't meet our schedule, because they received the call, and then two weeks later, we're expecting them to do the work at this point. So the little bid was Hemmingson Contracting, so Hemmingson's scheduled to start work on Wednesday on the concrete.
Very good, very good. All right. Any other questions? All right. Any public comment on the Harding project? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council then. We... Let's go ahead and address the continuing emergency status, and then I'd like to at least address briefly the draft letter that I presented to you. Do we have a motion to continue the emergency declaration for Harding?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote, reminding everyone we need a fourth, fifth vote to proceed.
Councilmember Greenow?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim?
Yes.
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Pro temp short?
Yes.
Mayor Enscore?
Yes, very good. I presented to you and for myself, and then with staff's help, a draft letter. There's a couple of typos that we need to fix, but we all received a letter that was addressed to me from the Construction Industry Force Account Council. They also sent the letter to the board of supervisors, and I have been in contact with them as well regarding the emergency declaration that we made for Harding. I think that the real question is whether or not we are conducting business in an appropriate manner, and they questioned that. I think that the crux of the matter is that in November, we were certainly aware of the problem, but whether or not it was an emergency in November is something that we really cannot state. Obviously, it wasn't an emergency in the sense that there was imminent failure, because it did not fail in November, or December, or January, or February. But by the time we got to May and started opening it up to look at it, it was clear we now have an emergency. So I think that there is a clear distinction between being aware that we have a problem that is going to need to be addressed and facing an emergency. And I think that that's what the letter is trying to convey, is that when we opened this up in May, we were clearly understood, we now have an emergency, which is why we took the action that we did. So I'm looking for consensus that we respond to Ms. Hunt and the Construction Industry Force Account Council with the letter that you have presented to you.
I agree that we should send the letter, fix them up.
Couple typos, yeah. Okay. Any other comments?
I think that we acted correctly, so I agree as well. Sewage in the street is not a good idea.
No, it would not have been a good...
It would not have been a good Fourth of July, sewage in the street.
Okay.
Now, the only minor, minor qualm is the word possible in front of environmental catastrophe. You know, I should say imminent along with it, or synonym for imminent, so we're not using imminent twice, because there was an obvious environmental catastrophe would have happened if the culvert failed, which is why we declared an emergency. So, yeah, I think we should send a letter, and if we don't change the word possible, I mean, I'm not going to be upset about it. No, no, I'm okay.
All right. Well, I will take your word, Smithing, upon advisement. Councilmember Keim, you have any thoughts?
No.
No, no thoughts, okay. Then do we have consensus that we'll tighten up the letter with some...
Yes.
And send the letter? All right. Mr. Young, I'll be by tomorrow, and we'll get this fixed. Not tomorrow, Monday, sorry. Well, having a holiday in the middle of the week throws the whole week off of knowing what day it is, and then having a council meeting on a Friday, yeah, I have no idea. It seems like Monday to me. Would you like to just start Monday, today? Okay. All right.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, I think consensus is special. A motion on whether or not we're going to declare today as Monday or a...
I think that's what he was talking about.
Oh, okay.
I'm not going to give consensus.
All right. Let's go on into new business then. We have an issue regarding the general fund pool budget and the overrun of costs this year, the '16-'17 year for propane, and so... the sixteen-seventeen year for propane, and so, Mr. Young, you wanna address this?
Need to turn that thing on. I can briefly, and then maybe Matt and Eric can give you more detail. But basically, what it boils down to is the propane rates, of course, are, are fluctuating greatly, just like gasoline, we see. Over the year, the rates vary by an amount of about eighty percent, from somewhere around a dollar to as high as a dollar eighty a gallon. And the consumption at the pool increased by about twenty-three, twenty-four percent last year, probably due to the weather, colder winter, longer winter. So the two combined ended up with the expenditures being about, close to fifty percent, about forty-eight percent more than had, had been budgeted. And frankly, was something that you couldn't really predict. Like trying to predict what the gasoline prices are gonna be next year. Pretty much the same thing. And as a result, seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars needed to be included in the budget that wasn't included in the budget. Now, I know Mr. Ware has got a breakdown, and I believe I passed out something that unfortunately I didn't include in the agenda packet, that it gives you how much propane was used in each of the last two budget years by month, and also what the rate was. Blue Star has, I guess on an informal basis, has been providing propane at fifty percent over their bulk, bulk rate. And I'll let Eric give you some details in his discussions with Blue Star and also with Suburban since this first came out. Okay, I'm gonna dump it on you.
All right, so, yes, now I think Mike gave a great synopsis of kind of where we're at today and how we got here. Just for more perspective on, on where the city's been, I asked Chrissy Rollins from our, our finance department to let us know what our actual expenses were for propane over the past, say, four or five years. And unfortunately, the budget, you, you normally look back to your last year, and that's what you base your budget off of. If you go back to, to FY thirteen, our budget was sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty, which is exactly what we're asking for with this increase. FY fourteen was seventy-four thousand, six hundred and some change. FY fifteen was fifty-two thousand, approximately fifty-two thousand. And then last year was approximately forty-five thousand. So on this, this last year's, in FY seventeen, we had fifty thousand dollars budgeted, which would have been five thousand dollars more than what we spent in the previous year. Problem was the gas prices stayed down during those years, and then they fluctuated greatly this winter. That combined with the severe winter that we had, it jumped our use up, and that's why we need the budget adjustment that we have. I did contact Blue Star, know just to talk to them about the rates, see just if there was, if there was anything that they could do from, from their side of things. Number of years ago, back in two thousand and twelve, we worked out, we used to just have a flat rate. They would just, it was the price that they gave us, we paid it, that's what it was. Back in two thousand and twelve, we adjusted that, that we would have fifty cents over their bulk rate. So their bulk rate comes out of San Francisco, they send us a weekly newsletter that gives us the bulk rate, and then we then look at the price, make sure it's fifty cents over. When they send us the bill, then we look at that, make sure they're charging us the right rate. Talked to Blue Star to see if they could do anything. They said they realize it's a community pool, they want to help us as much as they can, and for this next fiscal year, they're gonna drop that to forty-five cents per year. So that's kind of where we're at with Blue Star. I also contacted Suburban Propane just to see where, where they're at. They're, it's a little different. Blue Star has, is the only underground propane company that we have, so they have underground distribution mains. The pool has an underground service. So if we were to go to another company such as Suburban or any of the other gas companies, they would need to set tanks. And when you're using the amount of propane that we're using at the pool in excess of five thousand gallons per month, you would need at least three of their one-thousand-gallon tanks. So we would either have to set those above ground, build some sort of, you know, fence, bollards around them, in, in, right in the middle of the beachfront park area, or try to put them below ground and then install the piping. So all those things sort of figure into, to our options at the pool. So that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at. That's where my discussions are. Before this next year, we'd be at forty-five cents. If we use the same amount of gas we use this year, that would equate to about a two thousand dollar per year savings.
Do you know what the, what the current just commercial rate is? I see here the bulk rate, and then I see what we're paying, which is fifty cents above that. Do you know what your average commercial user that's on the line is, is paying?
It all?
Do we know that, that fifty cents over the bulk rate is a good deal?
According to my discussions with some of the other companies, it's not, it's not out of line. You know, there's, there's, there's different, different rates depending on the amount that you use, you know. So if you use a lot more, you might see a slightly better rate, because it's, again, it's all about the amount of money that they're gonna be able to make on a given customer. It sounds like we're right in the ballpark with, where, where we should be, according to the other companies. If you use less, it's gonna be higher. If you, say you go down and fill up your five-dollar propane tank at Joe Chevron or Suburban, you're gonna pay two dollars and twenty-nine cents. So that's kind of where that's at.
Okay, questions?
So what kind of rates was Suburban? Were they able to give us a comparable?
They, you know, so when I talk to Suburban, it's gonna take a much larger analysis for them, because they're gonna have to go in, they're gonna have to set their tanks. They did glance at it, and that's where, you know, I confidently say that, you know, we're right in the ballpark. It's basically what they told me, is their rates would be comparable. They'd be willing to give us a proposal if that's something that the city would want. But again, that would, we would have to then go and request proposals from all the, all the companies. It's probably not a bad idea to do so. Blue Star says they would hold this forty-five cents at least through this year. So the council would like us to. We could go out and solicit proposals over this next year and come back to, to the council with, with a long-term deal, because that's what it's gonna take for another company to come in. They're gonna have substantial investment in setting the tanks, providing the tanks, and any sort of infrastructure it might take. So it's, they're not gonna want a one-year deal, they would want three, five-year deal.
Well, I think the cost of those tanks would be on the city also, wouldn't they?
There's a rental fee.
You can, you can, all those things are negotiable, i- if, from what I'm finding out with, with the propane companies is, you basically, you ask them to, to give us a proposal, they might cover all of the costs to install it with a long enough deal at a certain escalator or whatnot, but again, it would, it would always be based on that margin. So it'd be a marginal cost.
Having tanks down at beachfront park is not ideal, though.
For, for the city, that would definitely be something we would have to look at.
I agree.
And then we, we would have to talk to the council commission, maybe Eric Taylor could chime in. But you could put the tanks underground. Underground tanks aren't necessarily the best idea, but it is an option.
Other questions?
Sounds like we're at the mercy of Star.
I think that that's, that is certainly.
Do we happen to think about checking with Farrell Gas across the border?
You know, we definitely could. You know, if we were to put this out to proposal, we would reach out to any company that would be willing to come and service us. I know Farrell's out there. I'm not sure if Par still serves the community or not. They used to be a gas company, that Par Gas that used to serve this area. And then you have Suburban, and obviously then Blue Star would be the, the main companies.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's open this up for public comment. Any, any, well, I guess staff, does anything? Matt, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Unless you have a question, any comments at all?
Okay. Okay, any public comment? All right, then we'll bring it back to the council then. We are, we have a resolution that will add this appropriation of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars if somebody is so inclined to make that motion.
Move to adopt Resolution Number two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, allocating an additional appropriation of seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars to the fiscal year twenty sixteen-seventeen pool budget for increased propane cost.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grino?
Yes.
Councilmember Kine?
Yes.
Pro Tem Short?
Yes.
Mayor Ensor?
Yes, very good. We have another item here, and it is a regarding lighting at the cultural center on behalf of California Redwoods Art Association. Mr. Young, would you like to introduce this to us, please?
I've been brought by the California Redwoods Arts Association with proposal that they would install a lighting system for the purpose of displaying artwork. Very specifically, what it would look like would be a track light, set with probably something like this inch and a half, set approximately eight foot above the floor. Specifically, it would be on the wall opposite the stage in the main room of the cultural center, and on both sides of the wall between the main area and the atrium. The, the track lights have a groove in it for one, obviously installing a light that would be sort of a gooseneck-type light that would be directed over the artwork as they saw fit, so it would be most appropriate for its display, and also a track for a hanging device to, to, to hang artwork. The art association proposes to purchase it, to install it, to maintain it, and to remove it if we so direct them to do so. They would be attached to the wall with screws. So once removed, yeah, there would be a hole or two, but there's already a hole or two in those walls. Also, they plan to purchase three folding display walls, two of them sixteen-foot in length and one twenty-four-foot in length. They fold up into two-foot panels. All these devices, when they're not in use for display, would be stored by the art association off-site. They've agreed to do that. At the staff level, we've said, we will look to see if we can find a suitable place for storage. One of the problems is, is that the walls themselves are like six foot, eight inches, and you wanna guess the height of our doors? We go, six foot, seven inches. So moving them is, was, it was not, won't be too easy, and they're heavy enough that you don't just reach over and tip it over and roll it through. But they're willing to, to store them off-site, and, and like I said, we're willing to work with them and try to, we found a few areas that might be suitable for storage, but unfortunately, we have to pass through at least one or two doors to get the folding things there. The lights themselves and hanging devices probably can be, Mr. Donovan can speak to it, but probably, my guess is the kind of things that can probably be stored in one or two large plastic bins and really wouldn't take up much space. It's a good way in which for them to further display artwork, including the Keller paintings, for example, not to mention surely local artists of their material. And so the committee met a couple of weeks ago and discussed it. We've actually discussed it twice, and, but I saw a little different, additional information. We went back and actually met at the cultural center with Mr. Donovan, and discussed it. The track, I should have mentioned also, can, is paintable, and we suggested that he painted to match the same color as the columns. You know, if you recall, in the cultural center, the wood is mostly natural redwood, of course, but the columns are black. And with that track, it'll probably look like it was just part of the tram within that, when something's not hanging, hanging from it. Recommendation would be, of course, to approve this. I think it's a good thing for the city and a good thing for, for the art association and their use of the cultural center. And I know Mr. Donovan, he probably wanted to talk about it and may add some comments concerning.
And the lights are also LED.
Excuse me?
The lighting is also LED, correct?
Yes, I believe so. Four watts for lighting? Yeah, yeah, they're, I can't remember, they are LEDs, like you said, it's like four watts, and each track would hold, what, five or six or something?
Ten.
Huh, ten? Okay, so you're basically talking forty watts, you know, forty, fifty watts drawn, which is pretty much minimum.
One fluorescent tube worth.
Tim, you wanna come and talk about it at all? You wanna, you wanna tell us why this is, why this will help the art association? I think that'd be good.
Tim Donovan, President of California Redwoods Art Association, thank you very much for taking our proposal. And what I would like to say is, I think that what we're looking to do is to make the cultural center a destination for not only people here in the city, but people coming from other places. We've had quite a bit of experience, especially this last week with the Fourth of July, with a lot of comments about the lighting system in the cultural center, about how lacking it is. And I think this is only the first of many steps to try and upgrade that system, to make it more attractive to not only ourselves, but anybody else that would like to use the cultural center for displaying of art. And as it's a cultural center, we would like to lean more towards that way than, than just overall lighting. But again, that's something in the future that we could take a look at. Hopefully, we will go forward from here step by step in adding more of this lighting system if it's okay with the city, and if it is successful, and I think it will be, in, including more of the, the full-time display of the Florence Keller paintings at all levels in the cultural center and throughout the cultural center, so that, again, it can get back to what the cultural center was originally set up to do, so. If you have any questions about the specifics of either the wall system and/or the lighting system, I'd be happy to answer them.
So it's my understanding that people are gonna be able to rent these items from you?
That, yes. Originally, the proposal, or actually, when we had talked with Mike and Eric initially, they had brought up the thought that maybe the city would be interested in purchasing them. And our thoughts about that was that unless you're familiar with the system in an ongoing basis, it might not be a good plan. So with us doing the maintenance and, and everything, we would be willing, through the city, to offer a rental fee for the use of them. So again, that would be something that we'd have to sit and negotiate and talk about doing, and you could just go ahead and include that if it was necessary, I think, in your rental, in your rental price, so that we could come in and set it up for anybody, and we'd be happy to do that, specifically so that it wouldn't create a problem with the, some damage being done that was outside of our supervision, so. But yes, that's a possibility.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Good deal. All right, general comments, concerns, questions, anything else?
I do wanna thank Mr. Donovan and the Redwood Arts Association for your work on this. I think this is a great opportunity for us to get more people to use that building. It is a jewel of our community. It's, it's an awesome opportunity for us to partner with you guys.
I, I would just, something I would just offer up to the cultural center ad hoc to work with staff on, in, in conjunction with this, since we're asking them, when they install this, to, to paint this track, I would, I would suggest that we, that we hold off on insisting that that be painted. Having walked around during the art show this week, I realize that we have, we have this attraction to the fact that this is a natural redwood building. I get it. But, you know, people have been whitewashing natural wood for years. I think that, that if you, you wanna brighten up that space, not paint it, not, not turn it into, look like the state Redwood, State and Redwood National Parks building, talking about a whitewash that would lighten up that building. And, and it doesn't make any sense to me to paint the track and then lighten up the building in there and then go, oh, well, now you have to paint the track to match that. So I don't think that the track, whatever color it comes in, should present a, a problem, so. But I think that, that maybe the ad hoc committee could talk about that with staff and consider the options, maybe a whitewashing that interior. I think it would, you got a dark wood floor, dark wood walls, dark wood ceiling. It may change the entire dynamic of that room with something that would be relatively inexpensive and doesn't require a lot of maintenance, so. But I'll let the ad hoc run with that. I would suggest that we don't require them to paint the track until maybe we talk about that, so.
I would agree with that.
Okay. All right. What is our, what is our action here?
It is to.
We have a proposal?
Authorize the city manager to sign the attached agreement for the installation maintenance of lighting in the cultural center as proposed by the California Redwood Art Association, as described.
All right, well.
And I move we do so.
And we have a motion to do so. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
All right, do we have any other public comment? Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Follman.
Yes.
Councilmember Greenow.
Yes.
Councilmember Keim.
Yes.
Pro Tim Short.
Yes.
Mayor Innscore.
Yes, very good. Thank you. We appreciate you guys very much. I trust that you had a good show on Tuesday. It looked like it. There was lots of people there, so hopefully. September, that's right. All right, very good. All right, we are at the end of our agenda, so look at that, we're done in less than an hour. That's pretty good, if you ask me. Okay, let's return just to any final things that we have. Do we have any legislative matters that we need to address? Do we know of any? Okay. Mike, you got a report for us? Anything you need to tell us?
Very briefly, next Tuesday is the deadline for application for the city manager position. Presently, we have approximately thirty. Sonny and I went through them today, and we did not those that we felt were not qualified, those that might be, so that we'll have, be able to come Tuesday, add whatever additional ones that are, and we expect to have for next Friday, with your agenda for the seventeenth, a packet with the applications. And as I said, unless you direct us that you want to see every single one of them, we'll give you those that we think have any qualification at all, including some that we might personally feel don't meet a particular level, but you may see things in it that we don't. But some we've looked at and you are very clearly not qualified. That what we expect is with your agenda packet, there will be a report and packet with all the applications we have at that line.
So, how many you think you got?
How many?
Yeah.
Don't know. Well, like I said, we have approximately thirty right now, and we would expect a few more coming in, but I'm going to guess that total will be less than forty, probably total. And my guess, you will receive from us, at least based on what we did today, somewhere in the neighborhood of ten to fifteen.
Very good. It's encouraging.
Okay, sure. All right. Before we get into what you guys have been doing for the last couple of weeks, we do need to appoint, or I need to appoint, an ad hoc committee for discussion with the county regarding shared services of a variety of issues. It could be anything that we could do together. So, if you're just itching at wanting to have a, be on an ad hoc committee, I would be happy to appoint you.
Are you literally itching right now?
Okay. Then I'll appoint council members Keim and Follman to the ad hoc city-county combined services. You all right with that? All right, good. Let it be. All right. Mr. Follman, tell us what you've been doing for the last couple of weeks.
I had a senior center board of directors meeting that weekend. I attended the interfaith council kids' town cleanup, not much until walking in the Fourth of July parade, and then Wednesday night, I attended the county's planning commission meeting where they approved Our Daily Bread's conditional use permit.
Very good. Councilmember Keim.
I haven't been doing a whole lot, other than trying to recuperate from pneumonia, which I still have, obviously. But I did go to the Fourth of July festivities, and I judged the parade, which is very exciting. That was very fun, a lot of great flows. Truly, people took the theme this year and ran with it. And yesterday, I had an airport authority meeting, and they have broken ground on the airport, and they've begun the slab work, and they will start pouring cement next week. So, it's very exciting what's going on there. And I would just like to say thank you to the Public Works Department for getting our beautiful hanging baskets up. I'm sure all of you noticed that they are all down Front Street, Third Street, H Street, and I Street, and they look amazing. Good job. Thank you very much.
All right. Councilmember Greenow.
I had a cultural center ad hoc committee meeting on June 27th at two o'clock at the cultural center. We decided to move it over to the cultural center because that was the subject matter. We thought it was the best idea to be actually there. If we had any questions, we could just go take a look at the subject matter, you know, in question. We discussed mostly capital projects that are necessary to upkeep the facilities. And then the next meeting, we're going to be talking about uses. I also want to thank the Redwood Arts Association for their restoration of the murals at the Veterans Hall. They look great. And I want to thank our city staff for all of their hard work in getting the city prepared for all the visitors that come in for the Fourth of July festivities. They looked great.
All right. Pro Tim Short.
Well, I went to Monterey to a mayor's and council members' executive forum on the 28th, 29th, and 30th. Attended a few different sessions. The first one was very interesting. It was a earthquake planning and response session put on by a doctor who evaluated the L.A. Basin's situation. One notable thing that I didn't realize, she talked about our building code, and that we build our buildings to where ninety percent of all the buildings will successfully survive an earthquake. The definition of the successfully survive an earthquake is that the occupants live. You would think, that's pretty... You know what, that seemed like one of those moments where like, yeah, I guess that would be success. But then you think about that if this building did create a space where the occupants would survive, then there's other buildings that, you know, of the ten percent or the older buildings would be red-tagged, meaning that they weren't safe to enter at all. Of those red-tagged buildings, there, in their models, there was four point eight buildings that are yellow-tagged, and those are the buildings that you could go in and get your possessions, but come back out, they're not, they're not good for occupancy. And of those, there's another six point three that would need to be torn down. So, effectively, forty percent of all the buildings in that model in that event would need to be torn down. I just, it was remarkable to think about forty percent of all the structures in the L.A. Basin would have to be torn down. She said the average for large earthquake events are every hundred and fifty-seven years, if I remember right, and it's been three hundred and fifty-four or something since the big one. So, she's, her, her observations was that we need to plan for it. It's coming. She mentioned that the aqueducts coming into the L.A. Basin, there's six of them, and all six of them cross the San Andreas Fault line. So, if it happens down there, I imagine we'll be sending some help their way, so we can think about that in future trainings. I also attended How to Make Housing More Affordable seminar, setting performance goals for city manager, how to handle the outlier city council member. I think that's probably the mayor, but... And also, how to, how to successfully plan, or how to successfully strategically plan for our cities. Sitting in that one, I sat next to John Cole, the mayor of Twenty-Nine Palms, and he looked at me and asked me, he says, "This may be before your time, but do you know a guy named Dick Trone?" So, of course, I told him I did know Dick Trone. He was the dean of students when I was at high school, and he mentioned how he was, they were athletes together when they were younger, so it was, it was kind of neat to make that connection. Small world, for sure. And that's it for me.
Very good.
I won't labor that any longer.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think it is, it may be part...
Agreed. Well, that wasn't on the agenda, sir.
It may be part of the job description that the mayor has to outlie, whatever that means, I don't know. I had solid waste management authority meeting. I did attend the changing of command for the Coast Guard for the Cutter Dorado. Was able to welcome our new commanding officer. Had a Chamber of Commerce board meeting along with councilmember Follman. It was part of the Kid Town project again this year. We had a large, large contingency of people there working. It is amazing how I was looking and watching the children play on the Fourth of July, how, no matter how much bark chips we put in there, ten dump truckloads full, how they can scatter that stuff in no time. So, everybody thought I was crazy when I kept saying, "You can't put too much underneath the swing sets." Now, there's great big holes in there again, so... But we had well over a hundred people who were there to volunteer. Great project. Had a tri-agency meeting where we gave an update with some information from USDA that we received during our Washington, D.C. trip. Had a meeting with Senator McGuire to continue to talk about No Place Like Home legislation and the possibility of joint project city-county to provide permanent housing for chronically homeless. Enjoyed the Fourth of July festivities. I do have one item that I would like to get consensus to send for staff's consideration. I did bring up at our last meeting, at least briefly, that we are going to have to once again address the issue of the ongoing solvency of our sewer enterprise fund. I don't think that we can just keep waiting for something to magically appear. We have met and talked to and had meetings, both at the staff level as well as from a political standpoint of engaging with Senator McGuire with meetings. I think the, at least my opinion is, we are going to have to address the long-term fiscal responsibility ourselves, and one of the things that we're going to have to do is address our rate structure. There's a couple of things that I think we need to do out of just general fairness to our community. I've been a long proponent of the consumption-based model because low-volume users, which includes many of our lower-income people and our seniors, would not be charged the same rate as people who are using much more. In doing some research and talking with staff about it, it is apparent that we can make a transition to a consumption-based model and probably even increase our revenues a little bit, not significantly, but it's not a loss. I would like to propose that we send staff back to the drawing board with the Will Dan report and bring back for sometime this fall, the idea of a new rate ordinance with transitioning to consumption base and a CPI-type adjustment for increases. I think that we need to do a better job of communicating with the general public about why we're raising rates. We're not raising rates because of all these other issues that maybe people think we are. We have to raise rates because it costs more money to do business this year than it did last year. We just had to increase last year's budget by seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars because of the propane rates. It costs more to do business, and we understand that, and I think most people can relate to that, and if we communicate it in a more positive manner, I think that we can do that. But I would like to ask staff to begin working on a proposal for us to consider, to once again put out, put forth a rate ordinance that transitions to consumption base and has a smaller two to two and a half percent, something like that.
CPI.
CPI-type of rate increase, and that we look at it at least as a two-year proposal, because I think that doing anything for one year is only going to, is just not going to provide us enough data to see how well it's, how effective it is, so...
The difference between the residential and the commercial rates. I pay twice as much at my house as I do at my business.
Well, businesses are set at consumption base, so that, that's why we have, businesses have been, commercial has been consumption-based all along, so we would be consolidating all of this. So, in essence, what you use is what you're paying for, and that's, I think that there is just some fundamental fairness that goes with that. The model that Will Dan did, even built in the idea that people would conserve, and so there's a ten percent conservation factor built into that, so we could even anticipate that people would use less water to try to save on their bill. But also, just as for the public who may be tuning in or may watch this later, is that we're talking about winter averaging, so we're not talking about giving an average and charging you for when you're watering your garden and watering your lawn in the summer. We're talking about a winter average when we use the least amount of our water and getting that as your baseline to establish your consumption base, so... But if the council is in agreement, I'd like the staff to begin working on that, because I think we need to readdress this before this year's out.
I agree.
I think it's an important step in the right direction.
Young, is that enough?
Yep, I think that's enough direction.
Thank you.
If we have questions, we know where to come.
All right. Ask the outlier. I don't know what that means, so that's okay. You can explain it to me later.
You know, I'm just poking fun.
I know. Okay, anything else?
Yes, if I could, a couple of comments based on council report. One, we need to recognize what the downtown divas did for the baskets. While we put them up, they provided them. So, they do look nice, and I think...
Very good.
One of the ladies is here tonight, but she can pass that on to the others, you know, that was a very nice improvement, and they contributed very significantly to it, even with the back and forth we had to go through to get there.
There were a lot of very generous businesses downtown...
Yes.
...that donated to that cause.
One other thing I might mention, just because it happens to get close to home, the earthquake in Southern California, we're facing one here or two someday in the Cascadia Subduction Zone, and California has a program in which they provide training for engineers, building inspectors and the like to do evaluations of buildings following earthquakes. I might take a little exception with some of the statistics that the professor provided concerning the number of buildings that have collapsed and what history has shown in California. But I'll give him one example. In 2010, there was a six point nine earthquake in Haiti in which two hundred and fifty thousand people died. Two days later, there was a six point nine, six point eight in Humboldt County, in which only a few of the older buildings came off their piers, and I think one person died of a heart attack that they might attribute to it. So, the building crews here do a good job.
This doctor made it very clear that it was a model.
Yeah.
They had to do some guessing and put it into the computer to make that model, so she was very clear with that.
But the earthquake planning is important, as we well know. We think of tsunami, but that tsunami that we concern ourselves with here will be from the, most likely from the Cascadia Subduction Zone, and that is going to rattle some buildings around here, too.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because we've, there's been a lot of things that's gone on throughout the first half of this year that kind of have overshadowed the trip that we made to Rikuzin Takada, Japan, and while we're beginning a plan, planning activities involving a delegation from Rikuzin Takada to be here in October... Takata to be here in October, we, we need to be able to step back again and begin having some of these discussions. Because the reality is, a similar event that the Tohoku earthquake presented to Japan, if that happens at the Cascadia Induction Zone, the last thing we're going to be worried about is, is our building code. And we, we need to double down on our efforts for our disaster preparedness. If there's anybody out there that has not signed up for the Everbridge, if you don't know what Everbridge is, then you need to get on PrepareDelNord.com, you need to sign up. I mean, we need to, again, remind people because sometimes it just gets out of our, of our regular conversations. But it, there are a lot of things that we need to be addressing. And I think that the partnership between us and Japan provides us some, some really great information, their learning curve, which has been very steep when you're talking about rebuilding an entire city, a city that's the size of our whole county. So I think these are good, good things that we continue to talk about, so. All right, anything else? All right, thank you all for being here and have a great weekend.